All right, we want to welcome everybody here tonight to meet the candidates tonight. It's going to be a very informal night, and we've got some candidates here. One of the main things that we wanted to do is not only let you hear from the candidates, but let everybody know what important -- how important a municipal election is. And we hope that we'll have a lot of interest in this tonight. And we, like I said, we thank everybody for joining in. And now we'll just get started. All right, our first two candidates are the incumbent Rachel Snyder and Mariah Renaud, the other candidate in Ward 1. And we'll just get started. What we'll do is you'll have -- we're going to give you 30 seconds to introduce yourself. And we want you to include in that why you're running for the City Council. And we're going to do it alphabetically.
All right.
And then we're going to rotate.
Okay.
So Mariah will tell us about 30 seconds about herself. And then Rachel will get 30 seconds, and then we'll start our questions. So go right ahead.
Okay. So my name is Mariah Renaud, and I'm running for Ward 1 because I want to create a safe, healthy, and thriving community for everyone. And as I've canvassed my ward for the last few weeks, I really feel like I represent the heart and soul of our community because I represent the small businesses that are concerned about government overreach. I represent the individuals who are concerned about crime. And I represent families who desire to raise their children in a safe and healthy community.
All right. My name is Rachel Snyder. I've lived in Rolla since 2015, when I moved here to become a professor at Missouri S&amp;T, where I teach writing and literature. Since joining council, I've had the opportunity to get to know my neighbors and really come to appreciate how great our city government is and how great they work for us. And I really value public service and helping out, and that's why I'm running.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to cover six questions. The first four were compiled by our news staff, and then the final two are submitted by the public. And you'll have one minute for each of those. The first question is, and Rachel, you'll go first this time. What policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better jobs to Rolla such as TIFs, tax abatement, eminent domain, or other type programs?
All right, so a couple of things I think is important to note, starting off. One, we learned in 2019 from the Rolla Regional Economic Commission that 68% of the new jobs created in Rolla were created by local businesses. So I think it's important for us to support the development of our local businesses as much as possible. And considering the use of tax incentives, TIFs, things like that, we definitely don't want to do it at the cost of our local businesses. Another thing that I think is important to note is that in order to attract new businesses to Rolla, I think the quality of life is very important. And the more that we can do to sort of develop walkability, develop our parks, develop our roads, those things like that are, along with the kind of wonderful sort of technology base that we have here for Missouri S&amp;T, those things are going to bring jobs in. So TIFs are good when they make sense for the community and for any corporate partners.
All right. Mariah, would you like me to repeat the question?
Oh, no, you're good. So Ward 1 does encompass a lot of the small businesses downtown. And being on the City Council, I will be their voice. And seeing small businesses grow and thrive is very important. That being said, I always want to encourage, you know, new businesses to come. But I want to do that in a way that safeguards the small businesses. So it's always in the small writing. It's in those safeguards, maybe sunset clauses, making sure whatever, TIFs, tax abatements, if those are used, that they are used in a way that does not cause any issues with our locally owned small businesses downtown. That being said, eminent domain is never something that I would support. I believe that's governmental overreach. But I love small businesses. I love seeing our small businesses grow, especially downtown. I think we have a lot of wonderful things happening.
Now, the next question is, what role do you believe the city government should play in public health matters?
Oh, for me first? Okay. So let's start off, the role that I believe the city does not have, and I would say it does not have the role of shutting down businesses, deeming some businesses as essential, some businesses as non-essential. It does not have the role of shutting down churches or occupancy limits within the churches. Those are things that I believe are outside of the city government. As far as what the city needs to do, I mean, the city should properly allocate funds that are sent from federal and from state. We should be, you know, involved in education, but we should not be infringing upon people's rights to choose what they do or don't do with their own health.
Okay. Rachel?
So one thing that I think has become clear this year is the importance of our frontline healthcare workers. I know about this a little bit because my father is a pulmonologist in Jefferson City. And as a lung doctor, he's familiar with sort of the effects of COVID on his patients and his community. And I think that it's important for local government to support the efforts of those healthcare workers as and when needed. I think it's also important to note, right, that as a City Council member, I've sworn to uphold the general welfare of the public. And public health is a part of that. And there's lots of ways, day to day, that our local government affects public health, right? Everything from sort of making sure we have clean water, which is hugely important, to making sure our trash is taken away.
Okay, thank you. All right, now you get to go first this time. And if I get this wrong, make sure you keep this key.
No, I think we got the hang of it.
All right, when it comes to city purchases and projects, should the city always go with the lowest bid or always go with a local business? Or what policy would you suggest?
You know, I think that the responsibility of spending the public's dollars is something that is central to what City Council does. And I think that in doing so, we have to balance a bunch of different factors, right? As much as we want to support local businesses and should do so at every opportunity that we can, we also have a responsibility to be financial stewards for the community. There are times and places where I think that it's better to look at it in terms of a case-by-case basis. I think that it's really hard to come up with a fast and even rule for how to do this in every opportunity. And I think it's important to consider that the context that we're looking at in the next couple of years is that as we anticipate potential shortfalls in the general fund, we need to be responsible with how we spend our citizens' dollars.
So when it comes to city projects and purchases, the city should always primarily support local businesses when it's possible at all because that money does circulate back into our local economy. That being said, we are the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So I would say it depends. If it's a $500 difference, absolutely we need to go local. If it's a $10,000 difference, maybe we go back into those local businesses and we ask them if they can match it, if there's anything that we can do. So that if at all possible, we can support the local businesses, and that is our priority. But at the same time, doing that in a responsible way to where we are making sure that we are getting a good financially responsible bid.
Okay, next question. What is a local initiative you are willing to support to build unity in the community and on the City Council?
Wow, so there are so many volunteer organizations here in Rolla. We have, just off the top of my head, we have CASA, we have Grace, we have the Backpack Program, we have the Pregnancy Resource Center. There's so many things that as a council and as a community, we should be involved in. If you want to help and serve your community, there is a place for you. That being said, one thing that I think could be helpful on a lot of different notes is maybe bringing back Community Cleanup Day, where we, as a community, walk through and clean up a neighborhood. We get to know our neighbors, we communicate, and we build those relationships because those relationships are where it's at. And in turn, we get to have a cleaner, healthier city.
That's a great answer. Actually, I was going to kind of add into that a little bit. If you're not familiar with the Schuman-Berwan Neighborhood Plan that has just got published about within the last week, neighborhood cleanups were one thing that were mentioned in that plan that I think is a great local initiative. Since there are some people in the Schuman-Berwan neighborhoods who, you know, aren't able to maintain their houses as well as they once were able to. In addition, some of the things that that plan talked about that I think are great is using neighborhood watches and organizing neighborhood watches as a way of sort of handling some of the petty thefts that are happening in that community. Also, they've talked about how maybe more neighborhood gatherings because there's a lot of students who live in these neighborhoods who don't necessarily feel connected to the broader community, but would like to be. And, you know, community members who really appreciate the students in our neighborhoods but would like to do more. And then finally, I think the animal shelter is an initiative everyone can get behind. Making sure we have the greatest animal shelter in the community or in the local area would be awesome.
Okay, next will be our two questions from the public. And again, you have one minute to respond. First question, the unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating a nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as a City Council member to help address this situation?
Well, and this is a really kind of interesting and complicated issue, right? That we have a wonderful woman working in codes, Kathleen, who tries to do as much as she can to handle abatements. However, she's only one woman, and considering that we have some, we've been trying to keep our budget pretty tight, she doesn't have as much support as we would like her to have. It's also important to note that the city doesn't necessarily have the funds to do the kinds of, you know, taking down properties as much as we would like. However, I think there are sort of federal resources and state resources that could be brought in that I think our city staff is trying to identify those opportunities. And there's other additional sort of resources just for individual homeowners to sort of approach to help with those kinds of projects.
Hey, guys. So that is a really good question because this is an issue. In fact, yesterday, I was speaking to some local law enforcement officers, and they were telling me that there's really not an abandoned building in all of Rolla that is not full of people who are homeless, and it's increasing our crime rate, and we're running into all kinds of difficulties there. So coming up with solutions for this is so important. One way that I feel like is a very good start is we really need to properly fund the police department so that they have the things that they need in order to operate successfully. We need to create an environment where, you know, criminals don't feel safe here so that businesses feel comfortable coming in and families feel comfortable coming in and taking over some of these things. So we need to create a safe, healthy community and bring in businesses that can help us solve this issue.
All right. And our final question from the public. Issues surrounding marijuana have been among the most debated by the Rolla City Council over the past two years. What is your opinion on marijuana? And do you think there should be more council action taken on this issue?
So that is a very interesting question. I believe that it's very different when we're talking about marijuana being used maybe for a medical purpose, for somebody who has cancer, and it's helping with people deal with chronic pain versus, you know, it being used on the streets, being used, you know, recreationally. So I think there is a difference there. I think what we need to talk about is the bigger issue of the hardcore drugs that are in town. Talking with law enforcement yesterday, I was blown away by the way that our crime numbers, our calls to the police department, everything is through the roof high right now. So we have real crime issues that we really need to focus on. And we need to make sure that all our law enforcement officers have what they need in order to operate and keep our community safe. So that is the issue. We have to create a safe, healthy community.
Well, yes. This issue has not taken up any time in the last two years on council. I think that, as my opponent here has acknowledged, right, that there is a difference sort of between medicinal use and recreational use. I think what we've been able to see is that, however, there are places where there's sort of gaps in the system because it's so new to Missouri that people are still sort of figuring it out. I think that there isn't necessarily any action that council needs to take that I can foresee. I think this is an issue that we kind of have a hold on at this point. And as Mariah has said, I do think that opioids are a much bigger issue for our community. And I think that solving that problem is something that takes not just city government, not just state government, but it takes all of us in our community.
Okay, now each candidate has two minutes to follow up, and you can talk about some of the things you previously didn't have time to answer or bring up something else. So whatever you want to talk about.
Okay. Oh, me? All right. So a little bit of what I'd like to talk about here is, I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the things that I've been able to work on while I've been on council that I think have done some good. For instance, I think that the passing of the use tax has been something that has been really valuable. I definitely support and have voted for public safety, including getting them the equipment they need, getting them the raises they need. I'm definitely concerned with that issue, and I've definitely talked to some of the officers and their families to understand that. I'm also proud that we have tried to put the center on the path to financial self-sustainability since that's been a contentious issue in our community for a long time. I think that I'd like to say that as a council member, I've worked really hard to sort of listen to all sides and listen to all the different perspectives. I've tried to reach out to members in my community. I've tried to handle and listen to the people who contact me, go to their houses. If there's a problem, if they have a question about something, come in front of council. You know, if I've got to walk in to a field and see how wet it is to understand a zoning issue, you know, I've done that stuff. And I think it's important to kind of have someone there who maybe also represents some of the perspectives of our varied Ward 1, right? You know, I'm a millennial, I'm a renter, you know, I have associations with the university community. And I think that the more that, or one thing that I do or try to do is I try to serve as a bridge between those communities. And I hope to do so in the future.
So I am running for Ward 1 because I love Rolla and I love this community. And I will be an advocate for the small businesses. I want to be a voice for law enforcement, and I want to be a voice for the individuals who have concerns. So I will fight for proper allocation of the use tax. I want to ensure that all of that money does go to funding our local law enforcement, that none of it goes into shoring up the general fund. I want to work with the community, with law enforcement, with the city. Together, we need to come up with creative solutions for crime, creative solutions for the panhandling issues. I will come with no hidden agendas, but as a citizen who cares about my community and who will stand for freedom, who will stand for conservative Christian values. I want to see us grow strong and healthy, and I love Rolla. I love you all. Ward 1, get out and vote. Rolla, get out and vote. We need all of your voices out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you both. And then we'll move to Ward 2, and you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, Ward 3. Good job. Everybody's got to know who I am. Okay, now we have Ward 2. Megan Johnson was, she was going to be here, but she got a little ill this afternoon, so she's not been able to make it. And we have Matthew, and we'll let you go. And also, we had Ben Bell. He was going to make it, but I guess he didn't make it tonight. So we'll go ahead and start with Matthew and let him answer the questions. First of all, it's 30 seconds to introduce yourself.
Well, good evening. I'm Matthew Crowell, and I'm running for Ward 2. And I'm running for reelection to bring common sense and local values, or to keep common sense and local values on our council. It's been a tough year, and we're ready, and I'm ready, to move forward with some of the issues that are important to our community. I am no stranger to getting business going, and I look forward to making our community a strong, vibrant community in the coming years.
Okay, now we'll cover the six questions that you've heard before. The first four by the focus staff and then two by the public. What policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better jobs to Rolla such as TIFs, tax abatement, eminent domain, or others?
So I do not like eminent domain, and I do not like TIFs. But I do like tax abatements, and let me tell you why. We have a wonderful facility at Hartman in the old Briggs and Stratton Building here in Rolla, and they were brought to Rolla because of tax abatements. And I don't know that they would be here if they weren't. And part of the tax abatement process was to encourage them to employ more local people. And they've done that. And so I think tax abatements are a strong way to encourage businesses to come to our community and hire lots of people. And we need to do that, especially in these times where we're dealing with businesses that have suffered. But we can't forget about our small businesses, and so the City Council needs to be a partner with our Chamber of Commerce, the Rolla Downtown Business Association, and other entities that are looking and fighting hard to get jobs in our community. And I want to partner with those to ensure that we are a strong, vibrant community and we have the jobs that are needed.
Okay, what role do you believe city government should play in public health matters?
So the city should play a very minor role, if any role at all. That role should be played by the county health department and the state. You know, this past year, I've been very proud of my voting record. When there was a vote to shut down the city, I was the only council member, the only one who voted no. And when the hospital and the county health department came to us and said there was a crisis, I was on a task force that brought in the Chamber of Commerce, the Downtown Business Association, and the health department to come together with a solution that would be workable for everyone and protect the health of our community and our businesses. And so I supported the ordinance that came as a result of that task force. And then in February, I was one of the first ones to push to do away with the mask ordinance. And that was because, again, the science didn't support the need for it anymore, and the community was ready to move on.
Thank you. When it comes to city purchases and projects, should the city always go with the lowest bid or always go with a local business? What policy would you suggest?
So the city needs to be mindful of protecting our local businesses. But that should not come at the expense of the hard-earned money that people contribute as taxes to our community. You know, one of the biggest issues seen on City Council is the purchase of automobiles, trucks, things of that nature for various departments. Those are state, there is a state contract that is public information. And so, you know, to the extent that our dealerships and things like that can go on there and match those prices or come pretty darn close to meeting them, I say the City Council absolutely should go with those deals. But if, you know, if they think they can out, or if they don't want to go online and look at those public rates and they want to charge significantly more, well, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to get them the best deal possible. And so I love to shop local. I would, I hope that our local businesses bid on these projects, but it has to be fair to the taxpayers and it has to be reasonable.
What is a local initiative you're willing to support to build unity in the community and on the City Council?
There is no question about it that we need a new animal shelter. If you have ever been there, it is deplorable, the conditions that our animals live in. And we need to do better. And so I'm very excited that finally, finally this year, we're starting to put together a real plan to build an animal shelter. And there have been numerous people in this community that have worked tirelessly and have contributed their hard-earned money and time to get this animal shelter off the ground, and it's finally coming. And I want to be there to push it forward, push it over that finish line so that we can be proud of the animal shelter that we have, and we can have an animal shelter that looks after our furry friends. Because what we have right now is just, is unfortunately a joke.
All right, next will be our two questions from the public. And again, you have one minute to respond to each of these. The unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating a nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as a City Council member to help address this situation?
So if you are a landowner out there and you are not taking care of your property, you better watch out because the reality is, we have an excellent code enforcer, and if we can get her the resources she needs, then we can send her out even more. If you know something out there where there's a dilapidated property or something that is causing health concerns in your area, I would encourage you to call Kathleen McMean. Her information's online. Or contact me. I'd be happy to reach out to you. But the reality is, we have good code enforcement. It needs more support. I think council can do more to help get that there. And if we have it, then we already have the laws on the books, so to speak, to make sure that we're dealing with these unsightly things. Now, the other part of that is, we need to do a better job of encouraging businesses to come to our community and fill and buy these dilapidated buildings and remodel them and encourage growth, and that will help. So those are the things that I would encourage people, and I will do as a City Council member.
Okay. Issues surrounding marijuana have been among the most debated by the Rolla City Council over the past two years. What is your opinion of marijuana? And do you think there should be more council action taken on this issue?
No, I am sick of dealing with marijuana. It is, as far as I'm concerned, we have a good state law. We passed a constitutional amendment so that people that need it can get it. We have reduced the punishment in this town to essentially a fine-only offense. I am ready to move on with other business of the council, and I hope that we can do that. There are people out there that need medical marijuana, and they should be able to do it and do it without fear of being treated like a criminal. But if you want to use it recreational, we're just not there yet, and there's federal law that prohibits it. But the reality is marijuana is not the issue that's facing our community. The issue facing our community is the hard drugs like methamphetamine, heroin, and the like. So we need to be addressing those, and that's where we should be putting our resources. Not to fight some issue with marijuana, but how do we deal with drugs like opioids, heroin, methamphetamine, and the like?
All right, now you have two minutes to follow up on some of the things maybe you've already talked about or bring up some things that you'd like to present to the public.
Well, it's been an honor to serve the people of this community in Ward 2 for the past six years. And I hope that I can continue to bring, again, my common sense and my local values to the City Council because there is still more work to be done. One of my biggest concerns I have is that as we move forward and as we begin to collect this use tax that the citizens of this community so graciously passed, that we will lose sight of what that use tax was meant for. It was meant to fully fund our public safety, our law enforcement, our police, our animal shelter. And, you know, too often, government likes to get a new funding source and take away the old funding source. And so what I don't want to see happen is our general revenue contributions to the police department, the fire department, and those types of things be dwindling just because they now have a new funding source through the use tax. And so if I am reelected, I will guarantee that there will not be a penny spent out of that use tax, and we will not decrease the general revenue contribution to the public safety departments until they are fully funded. And I don't see that happening in the near future. And this is part of the reason why I think the Fraternal Order of Police, our local Fraternal Order of Police, has endorsed me for Ward 2. Because they understand that I know what they need to get the job done, to protect our community, to make sure it's safe, and to deal with a lot of the issues that we're hearing about tonight. And so if reelected, I will fight to make sure that money is spent appropriately and is spent on things that it needs to be spent on. So I look forward to hopefully serving this community again for the next two years, and it has been an honor to serve thus far.
All right, thank you for your participation. And now we'll have Ward 3.
Thank you.
We won't hold that against you.
That's what happens when you go by yourself. Sometimes you forget things here. You don't have to make sure your name tag is up. Thank you for the patience.
Okay, we have two candidates for Ward 3. The incumbent, David Schott, declined to participate in the process. And then we have Matt Fridley is going to join us tonight. And Matt, you've heard us talk about, we're going to cover six questions. Four from the staff and two from the public. And we'll just get right to it. What policies, well, wait a minute. Let me back up. You've got to introduce yourself first.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. That's okay.
My mistake.
I often have to stop myself and correct a few things. My name is Matt Fridley, and I am a resident of Ward 3. I've been a resident of Ward 3 for almost 18 years. In fact, June 25th will be our 18th year in our house. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I've dedicated my life to serving others. I've been an educator for 19 years. My wife Julie and I have been married for 31 years. We have two grown children. My son also lives in Ward 3. I'm excited he has a sign in his yard. And we have one grandchild and one on the way. I'm asking for your vote on April 6th because I want to support local businesses, focus on growth in our community. I've been a resident of Ward Three for almost 18 years. In fact, June 25th will be our 18th year in our house. I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I've dedicated my life to serving others. I've been an educator for 19 years. My wife Julie and I have been married for 31 years. We have two grown children. My son also lives in Ward Three. I'm excited he has a sign in his yard. And we have one grandchild and one on the way. I'm asking for your vote on April 6th, because I want to support local businesses, focus on growth in our community, and finally emphasize the importance of safety.
All right. Now we'll get to the six questions. What policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better jobs to Rolla, such as TIFs, tax abatement, eminent domain, or other type of programs?
First of all, I have a big problem with eminent domain. I can't imagine taking someone's property in the way that it's done for, for growth. But TIF is a tool we can use, but we have to use it with clarity and make sure that we're judiciously using a TIF in order to help our community grow. You can't give away the store if you're going to draw on businesses, and we have to attract businesses and industries that fit our community. So it's important to look at the way you use those tools on the city council to, to bring businesses to the city of Rolla. Having the ability to do the research and understand the law is a crucial part, and listening to all parts of the community is also an excellent part to look at.
What role do you believe the city government should play in public health matters?
You know, I follow the example of the governor of South Dakota, Kristi Noem. You know, personally, I've said all along, this is a pandemic, a personal responsibility. I look at the role the city council took, and I have to, I have to think about how difficult that must have been to sit, sit in that meeting and make that decision. But we have to fight, we have to balance the fight, fighting the virus with maintaining social, economic, and mental health. In the end, I don't like government telling me what to do either, but I wore a mask in areas that I felt I might spread the virus to others. That's, that being said, I lost a family member to the virus, and I don't take it lightly, but I continue to make smart decisions, and most individuals will when given the choice. So the city council's role in health decisions, that needs to be the county health department doing some of those things.
All right. When it comes to city purchases and projects, should the city always go with the lowest bid or always go with the local business, or what policy would you suggest?
You know, the city purchasing manual allows for some flexibility in this area, but, you know, I look at taxpayer funds much like I look at my own. I'm willing to pay a little bit more to buy local, especially for things that may need local support to maintain, for example, a furnace or even jewelry for my wife. I feel better going somewhere local. But I believe the bid process has to be fair, therefore, we're going to continue to receive multiple bids to try to keep costs down to the taxpayers. The bid, the bids, the bidders for items such as pickup trucks and different things like that, they know the state contract price. It's, it's put out, it's public knowledge. They can bid a vehicle at that price and compete if they choose to do so. But, you know, the most important that we have to, the most important part of this that we have to maintain is that we are spending money that belongs to the taxpayers.
What is a local initiative you're willing to support to build unity in the community and on the city council?
You know, one of the most important things, the first time I went to the city council to talk, and the only time I went to the city council to talk, it dealt with the issue of safety. I think we need to bring back community neighborhood watches. I met with some folks on South Murray a few weeks ago, and it was fun to listen to the way that they got together and had an ice cream social, and they did this because they wanted to know who their neighbors were. I think we have an important role of protecting one another. The police department can't be everywhere to take care of all of us. As far as unity on the council, I think we have to have conversations about meaningful topics, about topics that matter to the citizens of Rolla, not have long-drawn-on conversations about marijuana and other issues that quite frankly can't be addressed at the city council level to the sense, to the degree that some of the individuals were pushing. We have to keep a sense of decorum on the city council as well. We have to bring some sense of decorum and civility back to our council. People believe in Rolla because you look at what transpired recently with the university with the large donation, and people support our community.
All right. Next will be our two questions from the public, and again, you have one minute to answer. The unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating a nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as city council member to help address this situation?
The property owners in the city of Rolla need to understand that we have to follow code, and it's imperative that we support the code in the city of Rolla. Above and beyond that, you have to think about what happens when you, when you leave one of those buildings abandoned and what can transpire. We've seen an influx of individuals moving to this community that are homeless, and allowing individuals to take over some of those places has created a problem in many neighborhoods. I hope that people will stand up and protect our community by buying some of those properties and getting them off the market and doing something positive with them. That's my hope.
Issues surrounding marijuana have been among the most debated by the Rolla City Council over the past two years. What is your opinion of marijuana, and do you think there should be more council action taken on this issue?
I have zero desire to speak about marijuana on the city council. I don't believe it's an issue they should have spent a significant amount of time talking about last year. I sat in a council meeting whenever initiative was, was presented about helmets for police officers, and we spent more time talking about marijuana than protecting the police officers in our community, the people who protect our very lives. So, talking about marijuana, that's a federal issue, and even the city attorney brought that up, and it was important for people to say, enough's enough, we're done talking about that, and I will have zero desire to have that conversation. That's a federal conversation that needs to occur, and if it happens at the federal level, we'll do like we've done before. We'll, we'll implement as, as directed.
Okay. Now, you have two minutes to maybe expand a little bit on what you talked about before or bring up some issues that you, that you would like to talk about.
Sure. I, you know, I've committed to serving the city of Rolla as we move forward. We have to support local businesses in industries to provide jobs for our families. The citizens of our community should be able to feel safe to walk in their neighborhoods, to play in their parks or go in their yards without worrying about the safety of their families. I believe we all have an obligation to serve our community and make it a better place for our families, but especially our children. I don't, I, I do this on a daily, on a daily basis as a father, a grandfather, an educator, and a husband of 31 years, and as a marine, I did it as well. I hope that the citizens of Rolla will step up and vote and support the meaningful resolutions of the council and help build our community and move forward. You know, one of the things I think about is a conversation that took place at city council, talking about chamber chicks, the very people who stand up in front of our community and promote our community, the question about the name of that group. I think it wasted a lot of time, and quite frankly, it drives people away from Rolla. We have an obligation to draw people to Rolla as a council member, and I hope that my positive outlook on what Rolla is about will, will ring true with the voters.
Okay. We thank you. And now we'll move on to Ward Four.
Which one?
Take your pick.
Oh, really? Seems like a hot one.
All right. We have with us tonight Robert Kessinger, unable to attend tonight because he was put under quarantine, is Dave Clifton, who had planned to be here, and then William K. Hahn II had a previous commitment, was unable to be here. So we'll start this time properly with your 30 seconds to introduce yourself.
Very well. Thank you. I'm Rob Kessinger. I'm a Christian, and that's what guides my life. I have a wonderful wife, Christina, and we have four wonderful kids, and I'm a fourth-generation chiropractic physician, 32 years in now, so very excited about that. And I decided to run for council because I'm concerned about the direction the council's taken, and I believe that we've lost some liberty, and I believe that we need to get back to Christian conservative values, because I think that that is where our community is.
Okay. Now, as we did before, we'll cover the six questions, four from the focus staff and two from the public. What policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better jobs to Rolla, such as TIFs, tax abatement, eminent domain, or others?
That's a great question. A lot of the TIFs and the tax abatements have to do with how they are actually negotiated. You know, some of those can be negotiated in such a way that it actually penalizes our small businesses, so I'm never for that, but you can have a win-win situation. But I think there's a different way to actually look at this. I think we can use our conservative principles and actually build businesses. We can make an environment where businesses will want to be here. There's a few things we could look at. Number one is we have a lot of smart people that are coming out of the university. We could have some startups, maybe if we would do things that would make it easier for businesses to start, less regulations. We should be able to protect our private property rights, to give people confidence in the government that, that they can build business here and it will be long-lasting. We need to provide a community that's going to be safe and appetizing for industry to move in. So there's a lot of things we can do from a conservative principle that will help flourish business.
Okay. What role do you believe the city government should play in public health matters?
Well, actually, there's a statute that the city government does have limited powers, but those powers should not be used to shut churches down, and they shouldn't be used to, to select businesses that shut down. And back in April, that's exactly what happened. It was a big mistake, and it was a big overreach. Now, one of the things that we have to consider is, in government, the more restrained the government is, the more free we are as people, and the more free we are as people, the better decisions we can make, and the more generous people generally are, and the better our community works out. So, this statute should be allowing for sanitation, sewage, clean water, the things that you would actually expect. There's agencies already in place right now that inspect our meats, inspect our foods, inspect our restaurants, and do all these different things. You've got the county health. So I think that the city government actually overreached and did not show proper restraint. We should not have a nanny government telling us what to do and how to do it.
When it comes to city purchases and projects, should the city always go with the lowest bid or always go with the local business, or what policy would you suggest?
This is another great question, because really, there's two competing interests here, and we have to consider those two competing interests and put it together in a way that will work. The first competing interest is, as a council member, I would have the stewardship over the money that comes in. This is, these are taxes, this is hard-earned money that's coming in, so there's a responsibility we have to spend this correctly. At the same time, when you purchase local, you're putting money back in the economy. It's a win-win, because not only are you helping people in the community, but that money that is spent in the community is going to recirculate in the community, so we have to keep that in, in perspective. So, if we make it a case-by-case basis, there can always be this position of maybe there could be favoritism, so we don't really want that. So we do need to come up with some level of a policy where, where we can maybe make a 2% to 5% difference or something, but there's things we can do to come together that will favor the local business.
What is a local initiative you're willing to support to build unity in the community and on the city council?
We have a cat in here. So, could you repeat that question?
What is a local initiative you're willing to support to build unity in the community and on the city council?
We have a cat in here. So, could you repeat that question?
What is a local initiative you're willing to support to build unity in the community and on the city council?
Well, first thing, I think this is a wonderful community, and one of the best things that I've seen and enjoyed that I've had is walking around the wards and meeting different people. When we think about community, we think of the root of being common unity. There's things that we really need to do that I think, in Ward Four, this is what I want to do. I want to bring back and strengthen neighborhood watches. I want to bring back some block parties, because neighbors that know each other is going to be a safer neighborhoods, and also, as far as unity on the council, I believe that unity is not people thinking the same way. Unity is people caring about the same issues and maybe looking at it from different perspectives and being mature enough to be able to talk about it, to come to the best solutions. So I really believe unity has to do with having the same goals in mind and understanding that there's different perspectives, and I always love the saying, nobody is 100% wrong.
All right. Next, we'll have our two questions from the public, and a reminder, you've got one minute to respond to each. The unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as city council member to help address this situation?
Well, of course, we talked about zoning. There are zoning laws that are in place. We don't need new rules. I'm always a person that likes less rules, not more rules, so we don't need new rules. We need to be able to enforce them, and some of that, we need to put a priority on it and be able to budget in that way. That's one issue. But I think the larger picture is this. I always like to look things through the prism of conservatism and conservative ideas, and one of the things we can do is reduce regulations in such a way that it'll make it easier for businesses and more appetizing for businesses to actually come in and invest in these, in these areas, because at the end of the day, people will invest if it makes sense for them to invest. I know I have a friend of mine who has a really cool, unique business that he wanted to bring into downtown. Well, as it turns out, it was going to cost him $10,000 just to do architecture draw-up based upon the regulations, because he was trying to put two walls up. He did not put his business in there, and unfortunately, the downtown missed out on really a cool business.
Issues surrounding marijuana have been among the most debated by the Rolla City Council over the past two years. What is your opinion of marijuana, and do you think there should be more council action taken on this issue?
Absolutely not. I, I think the council has so many things to, to take care of. This is one of the dysfunctions I see going on in the council. Why are we doing this? We've cut so many other fish to fry that we should not be taking up our, our time with this. Of course, people using medical marijuana, there are statutes for that, and they should not be ostracized. It gives a lot of people hell, and we're all for that. However, there's already laws on the books, there's already things taking place, we should not be taking our time doing this. We do have issues with levels of higher levels of drugs and crime, and so, one of the things that I would like to see us do is encourage the police department or give the police department enough resources so that we can be more proactive in going after big-time drug dealers and getting the drugs off our streets, getting our streets safer. This is an imperative. This is something we must do to maintain this great community.
Okay. Now, you've got two minutes to follow up on anything you didn't have time to finish or bring up a new topic, whatever you want to talk about.
Okay, good. I feel like I've been talking pretty fast here because of the time's constraint, so now I have two minutes.
Yep.
I'm very happy to be a descendant of Patrick Henry, "Give me liberty or give me death." So I think that that's kind of in my DNA, this idea of liberty. Liberty is the most important concept that we have. It's what's made America great. It is what allows us to be a free, and a free people or a generous people, a free people or prosperous people, a free people or people who can innovate and get things done, like we talked about of the abandoned buildings, we talked about different issues. We have the thought of freedom and less, if we have more restrained government and more freedom to do and think and act on our own, we're going to be better off. Liberty also looks like having safety. You can't be free if you're not safe. I am concerned about the increasing crime rates. I want to work with the police. I want to be able to do things. We talked about the use tax before. The use tax should be used for police and safety, and it should be fully funded, and we are understaffed in our police department right now. We need to pay attention to that so we can have safe communities. Liberty also looks like just having community. We need to, to have initiatives where we work and keep the community together. I like the idea of the neighborhood watches, because we can't just depend on the police department to do it. Not that I'm against the police, I'm all for the police, but they can't be everywhere all the time. The better we build community with each other, the better we're going to be. When I get on the city council, if I am so elected, I will fight for freedom, I will fight for conservative principles, I will fight for Christian values. I will not go to the city council and just be a go-along-to-get-along. I will not just nod my head yes to everything, but I will fight for these principles, and thank you for your vote.
Okay. Thank you for, for your contribution tonight. Now we'll go to Ward Five. We have with us tonight Stanley Mayberry for Ward Five, a Ward Five candidate. Marie Allen, the incumbent, had a previous commitment and could not make it tonight, so we'll start with Stanley and let you introduce yourself. You've got 30 seconds.
Sure. My name's Stanley Mayberry. I've lived here in Rolla for, right out of about 20 years. Lived in Ward Five for about two and a half years. Have a son that's in a junior high. Is actually my nephew I adopted in a couple of years ago, and really just decided to run for city council just for some of the issues and the things that I saw, and I thought maybe I could, you know, bring a common sense approach to it.
Okay. Now, we'll, as we did with the previous candidates, we'll cover six questions. The first four compiled by the Phelps County Focus Staff, and then two submitted by the public. First question, what policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better First question, what policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better jobs to Rolla, such as TIFs, tax abatement, eminent domain, or others?
Kind of like what most folks have mentioned before. Definitely against the eminent domain, but, you know, I think the tax abatements, I think there's a role there if it's, you know, negotiated right and correctly. But one of the things when I thought about this was, I think we need to look at what we can do to foster the growth of the local businesses, the small businesses that we already have. I think when we do that, you know, kind of going back to some of the restrictions and things that were put in place, it's been through a tough time for them. And we've got to make sure that we invest in that part of it to grow, you know, those businesses. So I think when other businesses look to come to Rolla and they see, you know, that we're behind in supporting our local businesses, I think that's going to draw those other businesses to us.
What role do you believe city government should play in public health matters?
Again, very limited at best. Again, I think that's something on the county level. You know, I think this, you know, this question obviously gears, I think, around, you know, the mask mandate and the hot topic that it's been. The government, whether it's federal, city council, you know, I think has to make sure that, you know, safety for the community is there. That should be a priority. But we also can't infringe on the rights of our community, of our local businesses. The last thing that we need to be doing is to be telling a family on how they should approach their safety, their health safety, those decisions. The same is with a business, how we should approach and tell a business how they should run their day-to-day operations.
When it comes to city purchases and projects, should the city always go with the lowest bid or always go with the local business, or what policy would you suggest?
I think in every case that we can, we have to make sure that we're shopping local. You know, as far as the city council, we need to make sure that we're using those local businesses. Again, you also have to be mindful of my dollars, the taxpayer dollars. We have to ensure that we're financially responsible in that sense of it. But we also have to make sure that, you know, we're trying to improve our community. And that part of that is, you know, making sure that we're using local businesses where we can. On the flip side of it, when we start using our local businesses and get those awarded those contracts, that could, you know, again, turn into more payroll, hiring people, expanding businesses, as well as it's going to attract other businesses to come here. Hey, look, Rolla, they're going to take the time and every effort to make sure we use local. And that's something I want to be part of, not something else.
What is a local initiative you are willing to support to build unity in the community and on the city council?
I think when I kind of looked into this question a little bit, I took it as a part of, I think there needs to be a trust factor that happens here in the city. I think a lot of people, when you look at the current climate, don't trust government, politicians, or however you want to look at that. And I think there needs to be something where we can bring the community together in that unity. You know, whether that's town hall meetings, bringing folks in where we can listen and come up together. The other thing, the neighborhood watch programs, I think that's huge. I think we need to be able to get out and meet our neighbors and feel comfortable in our communities and on our streets. And I think when you don't feel safe, you know, with some of the drug issues or the crime issues, I think that becomes a problem, and then people are not united. When you start talking with each other, I think you start building that bond from the street level on.
All right, next will be our two questions from the public. Reminder, you have one minute to respond to each of these. The unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating a nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as city council member to help address this situation?
Again, I think, you know, we have the codes in place and we have to, you know, as homeowners, landowners, we have to be responsible in order to take care of that. But the flip side of it, I think the more troubling is what happens when we don't take care of that. You know, the crime that seems to follow that, the drug use that seems to follow that into our communities. And so, again, I think, you know, we've got to look at that part of it as well with the law enforcement side of it. You know, several people have already said, and I don't want to, you know, have to regurgitate it. But, you know, the use tax and getting the police department where it needs to be to be able to, you know, curtail those issues that happen when we have these abandoned, you know, homes and buildings, and then turn around to be able to get, you know, people to come in, purchase those, renovate those, get the homeowners to actually take care of those.
Issues surrounding marijuana have been among the most debated by the Rolla City Council over the past two years. What is your opinion of marijuana? And do you think there should be more council action taken on this issue?
Well, my opinion of marijuana is, I don't like it. But, all kidding aside, I think it is, just like several of the other candidates spoke of, it's taken up way too much time. There, you know, there is the side to the medical part of it, but what concerns me more is, you know, what that leads to and the other drug issues that it can come into. Again, I don't think it's something that the city council should be spending the time that it has. You know, I think we need to move past that. As mentioned in the other questions, and probably the folks watching, we have several other issues that I think warrant our time to be able to address, you know, versus the time we spend on that.
Okay, now you've got two minutes to go back and follow up on some of what you talked about or talk about some things that we didn't bring up.
Sure. First, I just want, I appreciate the Phelps County Focus, you know, giving us this opportunity to talk to folks. I appreciate the folks that are, you know, watching on Facebook Live. Like I mentioned before, you know, one of the other reasons why I decided to run, when I moved into Ward Five, my house is right up against Walmart. We've got a fence line down there. And after we moved in, we decided we were going to walk over to Walmart, pick up a few things. And when, walking over to Walmart, going through the walkway that's set there, as we're walking down, I look down, three exposed needles laying on the ground. And this was five feet from my fence, you know, it's right there. And that's a continuing thing that seemed to happen. You know, the other issues, the safety in the community. Not even two weeks ago, I had to install a security system because I had, you know, someone knocking on the windows of our house. You know, living close to Walmart, you know, we do have, you know, the folks that stand on the corner, the van owner. We've got to be compassionate with those folks. But now it's starting to move into the neighborhoods. The same folks are walking up and down the street, looking into the windows. And that's a concern for me. We have to be compassionate for our folks in the community that had issues, and we need to address that. But we also have to start making sure that our communities are safe, our neighborhoods are safe. That's the only way that, you know, we're going to have a united community. We've got to make sure the police officers are taken care of. I spoke with the Fraternal Order of the Police as well, and they gave me their full support because we want to make sure that we're working hand-in-hand with them, we're giving them all the tools. So that way, with the community, with the police department, we can create a safe environment for our community.
Okay, thank you, Stanley.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Next and finally, will be Ward Six. Okay, from Ward Six, we have Victoria Culver and Robert Wayne Miller here. And unable to be here tonight was the incumbent, Christine Ruder. She had a previous commitment. So we'll go ahead and start, and we're going alphabetical. So Victoria, you can introduce yourself. You've got 30 seconds.
Well, hello, my name's Victoria. I'm 24 years old. I'm actually not native to Rolla area. However, I'm getting married next month, and my fiance and I have decided that we want to stay in the Rolla area and raise our own family here. And so with that, I decided that it was time to get invested into the community, and I wanted to start running for city council in Rolla.
I'm Robert Miller. I've been a Roll resident for the last 11 years. I was born here and raised in a small town called Licking, just a short half-hour drive down 63. I'm running for city council because we have to be innovative and we have to be inspired. And I'm running on a campaign of the Think Outside the Box solution. And I believe that if we can be creative, we will find the solutions that will produce results for future generations and for Rolla as well.
Okay, now we'll cover six questions. The first four by the Phelps County Focus staff and the other two submitted by the public. And Robert, it'll be your turn to go first this time. What policies, efforts, or incentives should be used to bring new and better jobs to Rolla, such as TIFs, tax abatement, eminent domain, or others?
Well, first off, eminent domain would not be on my list. I don't believe in having to confiscate people's property because of a simple task to create new jobs. But I am all for the tax abatements. TIFs, we would have to proceed with caution because TIFs are a really slippery slope as far as the legality. But as being a employee of Harman U.S. for three and a half years, I could say that, you know, with the policies that Harman has initiated with and with the city of Rolla, through getting the jobs to the community, it has been a positive. And we're also undergoing company expansion right now, which, without these policies, as previously stated, these jobs may not have even existed for our local residents. And it's very important that we keep the local residents in mind as far as creating these new jobs.
Well, I must say, I'm not crazy about TIFs at all. I don't like the government being involved in our business. I really like the idea of tax abatement because it lowers our taxes for quite a time, up to 25 years, I believe. And as far as eminent domain goes, that is a no-go for me. I do not think the government, or anyone for that matter, should be able to trample on personal property rights. If you buy that home, you should be able to make that decision to stay there, regardless of if there's a project to be built. Now, I think a TDD can be used to bring jobs here. But I think in order to use a TDD, we should expand on the outside of town and maybe extend the city limits out and make a proper area for businesses to move into.
Okay, thank you. What role do you believe city government should play in public health matters?
Well, I really liked this last year how Phelps Health, the Health Department, and the Rolla City Council took the time to work together and share information with each other. And I think that's wonderful. I really think the Rolla City Council should take that information and inform the public of what is going on with public health matters and let the public decide from there. The Rolla City Council does not know everybody's medical records, so to force a mandate that could negatively affect someone isn't the best move.
Well, as far as the government's dealings with our public health, I know that there is a statute that gives the city limited powers in regards, as previously stated. But it should only be used as an oversight. Because when we're dealing with public health, a public health crisis such as what we're in right now, we have to keep the best people's interest in mind as far as freedom to choose. Because the freedoms that we have, you know, our military has fought for our freedoms, and it's always important that we also keep them in mind as well. And it's the mutual respect that we have for others' decisions that is what makes us grand and binds us together as a community that does create unity. And we should never let our guard down, obviously, with the pandemic and any pandemic that could be coming in our near future.
Okay, and Robert, you'll go first on this question. When it comes to city purchases and projects, should the city always go with the lowest bid or always go with the local business, or what policy would you suggest?
We should always keep in mind that we should always go for the local business as much as possible. I know through previous experiences with city council, purchase of a Ford pickup, that was used, you know, on a $750 difference. But maybe we can propose a hybrid model as opposed to, you know, let's see what the small business will offer and, you know, go to surrounding areas in the interest of the taxpayers. But always with taxpayer money in mind, we should always, always, like our personal finances, be responsible and not overdoing. Because overdoing, even one penny over is like a bad mark on a bank account. You know, you're overdrawn, it's overdraft, you know? It's like getting charged a fee, and will have negative repercussions on taxpayers and small businesses.
Well, I think our Rolla City Council should always, always try and shop locally because what that does is it supports our local businesses and it actually sets the example in our city for people to shop locally rather than going out of town to, say, buy a city vehicle that's only $588 more at home. Because for all we know, if we don't support that local business, they will close down. And then we will have to leave town to get a product or service. So I really think supporting our local businesses is where we should spend our money in Rolla.
Okay, now, Victoria, you'll go first on this question. What is a local initiative you are willing to support to build unity in the community and on the city council?
Well, I think one of the biggest things I've noticed over this last year is communication. We lack communication on city council and the community about issues going on in our community. One of the biggest things I do when I go out and I talk to people in the community is I spend three-fourths of my time when I talk to them, asking them questions about issues in the community, such as crime, homelessness, what they thought of the mandate, and things of that nature. And I spend maybe a fourth of the time talking about what I think because my job isn't to make decisions for people, my job is to represent them.
Okay, now we'll have our two questions from the public. And again, you'll have one minute. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay, you're okay.
Two mistakes tonight, that's not too bad. Sorry about that.
You're okay. It happens to me sometimes, too. As far as creating unity in the community, we should have a self-sustaining government that taxpayers can be proud of, you know, as far as the issue of, you know, purchasing vehicles or having something like the center, you know, a building like the center, you know, where people can go to, you know, to have a good time with their family, you know, to exercise and, you know, just be a part of the community. And we should keep that in mind because a self-sustaining government will provide for its people, not take away from the people. And in regards to that is, the unification part is where we have to focus solely on being fiscally responsible. And we can also branch out into other areas like our police or fire department and also to even our neighbors. Because the issue with unification is solely on that part.
Now can we go to the other questions? Okay. Next will be there are two questions from the public. The unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating a nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as city council member to help address this situation?
Well, to address the underlying issue such as that, can you repeat the question?
Sure. The unsightly presence of abandoned buildings, both houses and commercial structures, is creating a nuisance and safety hazard for some neighborhoods in Rolla. What would you do as city council member to help address this situation?
So in regards to abandoned houses in our community, there's been a lot of more abandoned houses that are, you know, they're attracted by homeless and everything else. And we have to be really careful in regards to abandoned houses. We've got a great building in zoning and a great building inspector. And we should reach out to our neighbors and especially the ones, because this is happening to me personally, where when my grandmother passed away and her house was left in probate. When it was left in probate, you know, it can last for years and years until it's finally resolved, and it may not be considered an abandoned property per se. And we should always keep in mind that abandoned properties can be slippery slope. But also, we can reach out to the city to enforce the building codes and especially with property owners that refuse to comply with such codes.
Well, I've actually had the pleasure of meeting Kathleen McGee. She's a wonderful lady. And I think what Rolla needs to do about the abandoned homes in our community is to give her the proper funding to be able to go out more and address it and get these things fixed would be one way to go about that. Now, as far as the commercial buildings, there's a couple of commercial buildings over here on 72 by Autozone. And when I think of those buildings, I really think the city could potentially get together with that real estate company that's selling those buildings and see about what they can do to give those buildings, get those buildings back to their former glory, if you will, and promote them on and put them, promote them on the market to businesses to bring jobs here, revenue here and just build our community economically.
Okay. Issues surrounding marijuana have been among the most debated by the Rolla City Council over the past two years. What is your opinion of marijuana? And do you think there should be more council action taken on this issue?
Well, I'm not too crazy about talking about marijuana. As far as our community goes, it's pretty low on the priority list. There are more important things to be worried about, like the continued drug problem in our area, the petty theft in our area, the homelessness. We want to go out and we want to help those people who are in that trouble and just help our community overall. The marijuana is okay for medical uses, but beyond that, not too interested in it.
I think the marijuana issue is really taking a national conversation, not just here in this community. But as far as the actual issue in regards to city council, I believe it's time to, you know, wrap the issue up. I mean, we've had medicinal marijuana, it's a very great, very useful thing when it's used appropriately, you know, for people that do have medical conditions. But in regards to as an overall recreational use, there's state and federal laws that say it's illegal. And we should, you know, respect the laws that were created beforehand. But I believe that the council has taken enough time to consider the issue and we should put it to rest and take up issues like the opioid crisis and hard drugs, you know? Because we've had, the last several weeks, we've had several drug busts that have occurred, especially in Pulaski County. And, and I know that these busts will continue and we should keep that in mind.
Okay, now you have, each have two minutes to kind of reflect back on some things you want to say a little bit more about or bring up some other issues. So Robert, you go ahead.
Well, when I was mentioning previously about having a self-sustaining government, you know, that's a government that, you know, will take care of its own and actually be able to provide for its own, its own entities. And especially with the issue, as I mentioned before about the center, you know, we've been, the city's been investing a lot of money into the center, but now it's starting to, it's starting to get too much. And I've talked to several people, especially in Ward Six, that think that it's becoming too much of a burden to even try to even pay for. So the question of it is, is with the huge deficit such as the center now, where is it leading toward? Is it leading toward, you know, privatization or are we still, is the city still going to run the facility? Or, you know, what's the plan? So in regards to self-sustainment, we should be looking at more of the appropriations part to provide more for our public safety and for other entities such as parks in Iraq, to make our parks safer because, you know, we've had needles that have been spotted in our local parks even. And taking up the homeless issue, you know, we have to also show compassion for them, but we also have to make sure that laws are being followed. And I believe that appropriations will do a lot more to help take care of our own and also of our neighbors and community.
Well, I think some of the things I want to share in this two minutes is the things that I'm interested in running on specifically is freedom health, the freedom of health and to support our local law enforcement, to promote entrepreneurship in our community, to work with the local law enforcement to help keep our community safe and support our local businesses in our area. I think those things are very important and I can't wait to work with our local law enforcement and get the use tax to where, adjust the use tax to where it should be used. Instead of even having an option to shore up the general fund with the use tax, I think that money should specifically be set aside in account, if you will, to only fund our public safety. And if there's more money left over than what we, they need to fund our public safety, set it aside for emergency. You never know, a police car might get wrecked and we may need to go buy another police car, things of that nature. And just work on the proper appropriation of city funds in general. For the last four years roughly, we've been $500,000 or more in debt. And I would really like to work on bringing it to where we're actually at a net positive, if you will.
Okay, we thank you. And that, that concludes our evening. And we'd like to thank everybody that joined us on Facebook Live and also all the candidates that were here. And I think it turned out well and hopefully tomorrow, this will be on YouTube also. So everybody, just go ahead and see if you can find that on YouTube tomorrow. And we appreciate it.